Evening, if I may have your attention. It's my privilege to welcome all of you and the attendees this evening.
Thank you.
Somebody was thinking.
I'm going to have the red light.
Okay.
Excellent. I welcome all to this regularly scheduled Vader City Council meeting, which I will declare a call to order at 6:01 PM. And I'd like to particularly note the presence of Gary Stamper, the county commissioner, and Eric Martin. And we'll give a report shortly with Betsy Dillon from Lewis County, our water specialists, and public works director. So, of course, this will be our last meeting with the deputy chief man.
We'll see, maybe not.
Hopefully, no guns will be fired tonight. And he's moving on to another assignment. And of course, we have some firsts and lasts, which we'll bring to everybody's attention later in our meeting. But we'll proceed at this point with the roll call. And there's something that then...
If it comes up, I'll tell you. Yes, roll call.
Yes. And did I get the date? Today's December 14th. The last city council meeting of the year. So, let's proceed with our roll call.
Okay. Andy Wilson.
Present.
Jason Daley.
Here.
I'm sorry, Jason Daley. Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Also present.
And with that, we now, in a previous workshop, had a pledge of allegiance. Do the council want to repeat that?
Yes.
I heard a yes. So, Mr. Daley, would you...
Here.
...use this, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed at this time with the mayor's report. And there is a season of holiday and merriment. I can tell just looking at the refreshments over there that we have much to celebrate in addition to Christmas. But I would make note that today is Andy Wilson's last day. We'll address that in greater detail in council reports. But after 33 years, first having been appointed a member of the city council in 1979, so that would be 11, 21... Too many years to count.
Seventy-nine. I'm 44. I was born in seventy-three, so...
That's a long time. And of course, I'm sandwiched between Mr. Schei, who's just today's 40th birthday, and will be partying that. And so, you've been serving for four years?
No. This is your second term, isn't it?
Well, right. No, this is the start of my second.
So, if you live to be 92, then you could beat Andy's record if... This could be distinguished.
That's a hard achievement.
Ooh, man, I tell you. So, no, we're grateful to each of you for the service that you render. But, so I guess that's what's comforting, is feeling of celebration. I would, over and above that, point out that I did receive an official letter of resignation from Diane Floyd, our deputy clerk. And I think we reported that on our previous council meeting. And we've subsequently begun to advertise for that vacancy, and we're receiving applications, several of them, and some are outstanding applications. I'm very excited about the prospects we have. And I just felt like in the mayor's meeting, I'd like to plan an interview or two, perhaps even as early as next week. And I'd invite a member of the council, if you'd like to assist in an official interview, to join with me, and perhaps Jill as well. I'd like to have three people present. So, would there be a member of the council who would like to volunteer to assist? Leona, you've expressed interest. So, you'll arm wrestle Leona after the meeting if you want to. So, I'll let you know.
She wins.
Very good, then. Thank you. But there'll be more information and news on that forthcoming, obviously. So, I know that we're going to have a report on recent events in the city this past week involving the story that was on the front page in the town crier. So, I'll not steal deputy chief man of the information that he's grateful to the sheriff's department for the service they render in our community. So, with that, I think we'll press forward. Oh, with regard, I also wanted to congratulate all the council members who ran for office and won. Most of you were unopposed, but, and also recognize JD Costello, emerged victorious in that campaign. And would let you all know that per state guidelines, we'll swear all of you in in first council meeting of 2018. So, that's, and we'll take care of that. But congratulations to you all. Now, we'll proceed with our council reports. We do have noted on the agenda that we were going to recognize our outgoing council member, Andy Wilson, at this time. So, we do have the certificate for presentation, Andy Wilson. We'd like you to accept this.
I'm here with a certificate of appreciation for your many years of service as a council member in the city of Vader, most recently for the last eight years.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, I sure appreciate it. I've got an awful lot of stories I could tell all of you. They might take two weeks.
You'll have to write in your memoirs.
Memories.
Yes. Well, any other council reports that you'd like to bring to the collectivization? Okay, then with that, let's proceed with the official city council meeting agenda for tonight. I don't have any additions or deletions. So, I would await council action.
I'll move, I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for Thursday, December 14th at 6:00 PM, 2017 at 6:00 PM.
You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve the city council meeting agenda for this evening, as noted. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, the minutes approval for the previous city council meeting and our city council workshop, which was held on November 30th, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for, and the workshop, for 11:30, 2017.
Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve those city council meeting minutes and the city council workshop. We have a second.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of December, 2017, in the amount of $25,357.98.
Mr. Schei has submitted a motion approving the expenditures, as noted. We have a second.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now, it's time for our special reports. And our first report is from Lewis County Public Works, our water system fees update. And Betsy Dillon will provide that for us. Two weeks away.
Yep. Two weeks until the day.
Be called.
She's talking about her water, her water break.
My water break. So, I have a few updates for you, and I'll start with the most fun one first, the Vader tank project. We just passed the 90% design milestone, so we're expecting the 100% design plans in early January, which puts us on track for going out to bed in springtime and still on schedule for summertime construction of the tank. So, we're still on track for that, and we're still really excited about it. It's going smoothly. The second update is these brightly colored diapers that are up there are notifying you, and you all should have gotten in your bills this month, flyers that the fiscal office is moving to, it was downtown Chahalas, and now it's going to be in the public works office. So, that's the office on Kresge Avenue across from Yardburg. And that, that's happening, of course, right around when the bills are due. So, we appreciate your patience with us. And January 10th is the moving day. So, if you pay your bill in person on January 10th and afterwards, come to the public works office. But before then, we're still downtown and hold fiscal office. Lastly, the reason we came here, so every year when we do our budgeting process, we evaluate our rates and fees. And the good news is that we didn't determine that we, we're not going to raise the rates this year as far as your monthly rate and your usage fee are going to remain the same. But we are making modifications to the delinquent charges, the door hanger charges, the meter on fees, service call charges. So, the extra charges that get added on if you are late on your payments, or if you have additional needs that you call, call the operator out on, those are, those are going up. And those are to cover our expenses to offer those extra services. So, that should not affect most people on most bills. The one charge that we are increasing that is going to affect everyone is the capital improvement surcharge. That's going up $1.50 a month. And that's going up as part of, part of our agreement with USDA is they, they kind of analyzed our finances and determined that we needed to up our surcharge. So, that's going to be $4 a month now, so that'll be $8 a bill. So, I have, I'm open for any questions you guys might have or comment.
That extra $1.50 a month, that goes into a fund in case you have any mechanical breakdowns, correct?
Yeah, well, and try to be more proactive than just replacing any good breakdowns. So, it's capital, it's capital, so it's all equipment and renewal. So, it's, it's not really maintenance, and it's for equipment. It's for things that you need to, you need to buy.
Right.
So, yeah, it's specific, you know.
Mr. Wilson.
Do you think that the public utility district could afford envelopes? Get an envelope for us to make the money back to you with all you make on us?
I don't know. I don't know how much the billing envelopes cost, I guess. We could look into it.
Yeah, we haven't done it before, but we can certainly, we can certainly look into it.
People need us.
Yeah, a lot of utilities do. They send out an envelope that's got an address on it. You would have to put your own stamp on it, but they, they do send an envelope to you.
So, your envelopes are, your bills are like this, and I have to get envelopes like this? Whereas you could take them, cut it in half or whatever, do something to make it much more convenient for the people, not just me, for all of the people in there mailing their bills back.
Okay.
I mail mine right back, but then I have to give them that a little.
What does the new rates going to affect?
They'll be in February 1st, so the next billing cycle.
And the water storage tank can be one of those big ones way up high that say like...
It is going to be big.
Welcome to Vader.
I don't think you'll be able to see it though, because it's going to be on the other side of the, of the existing one.
Put it downtown, big water tower. Put it high enough.
Yeah, we don't have that in the budget.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Okay. Well, now, the report number two is from the deputy chief man, Lewis County Sheriff's Office report.
I'm giving them to him now.
So, you're getting November's information. Basically, there's 274 contacts, only one call on shift, 18 off shift, so 19 calls for service, 25 traffic stops, three infractions issued, and a misdemeanor arrest. There were three criminal cases, an assault, vehicle theft, and a burglary, and all three of those were cleared by arrest. So, so you had 100% clearance ratio for the month on. So, any questions on November?
All of those were a different person? Like, they weren't?
It's a valid question.
Yes, yeah, they were all different cases.
Third time they just keep on.
So, any questions outside on November? So, now you want to, some information about December. If you hadn't, I don't know whether the Chronicle covered it, about a month ago or two months ago, there was a big operation between Thurston County, Mason County, Pacific County, Lewis County. Basically, even go back six months prior to that, we hit a big grow in Sen Road, Onalaska area, which to date now is the biggest grow in Lewis County that we hit. But we found out that it was Orientals that have come up from California and buy property for grows, because they think Washington State is legal for marijuana, so nobody will bother them. And then they harvest the marijuana and take it back down to California and sell it. So, so then Washington State is not getting nothing out of it. So, so from that original grow, they started looking into this outfit down in San Francisco in California that was buying all this property, and they came up here and bought it all in cash. Every piece of property they bought was in cash. So, they'd buy these pieces of property that have some sort of big storage buildings on them. And of course, the task force for all the different counties put it all together. And then, this, this last month, they had a big raid, and they raided a whole mess of these grows, Thurston County, Mason County, Pacific County. Well, lo and behold, in one of the grow operations, your address right across the street from the city hall came into play. So, so it was just from all the paperwork that they compiled, they've been going around and getting more information. And so, what we did is our detectives set up some surveillances on this, because, I mean, you guys didn't notice it, I didn't notice it coming here, but they had a very good filter system over here, it's where you couldn't smell that at all. In fact, the only way that we finally got a smell off of it was, we had to go do it, knock and talk on it, and get right up to the doors, and, and then you could hear the vans and get a little whiff, so, yeah. So, they had a really good filter system on it, so that's why nobody here could get any, any flow from it or anything like that, so. And then, this last week, we finally got the search warrant issued because we were able to get enough information off of that. And so, then we hit it. Of course, nobody was there. Over 600 plants, active, you know, good plants that were there. And then, lo and behold, while they're there, one of the gentlemen shows up, and it's the gentleman that they wanted to get from Pacific County, so he was placed in custody and shipped to Pacific County, and in turn gave us some names for who's, who's doing some cultivating. What they do, they just go around all these different places and cultivate them, but they're basically no one, pretty much living on site except for the biggest outfits. You could, yeah, a lot of time put in by our detectives, because they, every time someone was working here, we didn't want to arouse any suspicion, because we didn't know really what was going on. They did have some vehicles parked there, but there was nobody there. They just put vehicles there and stuff, so. So, it was, you know, they're trying to do that, but, yeah.
One quick question.
The bus that they gave out down towards Ryderwood, was that involved in all of this?
Was it a marijuana grow operation?
Couple months back.
That mean, that mean Cowards County?
No, it was still Louis County. Halfway between here and Ryderwood. And that's where I heard that this address came up into play, was from that, that place.
Oh, it came from Pacific County. This address came in from Pacific County, because the guy that they arrested from here had three or four of the places in Pacific County, but wasn't at them when they, when they did the bus, so.
So, the one down there was not...
No, I don't, I don't think that one was associated with this in any way.
One more, can you?
Are you at liberty to discuss today?
Yeah, the, the other thing that's going on is that there is some, the detectives are working a case, there's three or four burglaries, some outside of the city and a couple inside the city. And, and basically, they're getting names of people. The person that we have is a prime suspect, he is not being found, but we are looking for him. And so, they went around today to talk to some other people that supposedly are associated with him. And, but basically, we'll clear up about three or four burglaries in the area, which is pretty well normal, because when you get a rash of property crimes, it's usually somebody that's done one, and then now they're, now they got away with it, so now they're going to go do some others.
You already took one person in custody today, correct?
Yes, yes. So, yeah.
That's our report.
Okay.
Appreciate the service that Lewis County Sheriff's Department renders to our community. Now, it's time for our public comment.
Okay, so we have three people signed up, but I don't know if they want public comment or the public hearing. So, I guess we'll have to ask them. Do any of the three people who are signed up want public comment as opposed to, okay, May wants public comment. Anybody else want public comment? Donna, you want public comment?
What's public hearing?
There's a public hearing on the budget.
Oh, no, I want, I want three in this place.
Okay, so everybody wants public comment. So, May Heiner is first on the list. May Heiner, 1247, State Route 506. I don't always get a chance to make it to council meetings, so I guess we thank Joe or YouTube.
You're welcome.
But anyway, I, I try to listen to it, because being in such a small town, you hear a lot of rumors that go around, so you like to get it firsthand and make sure what you're hearing is, either it's correct or not. But when I was listening to the YouTube last, for last meeting, it kind of disturbed me that since all of you council people are elected by citizens, and yet, when a citizen gets up to make a comment, they're kind of made fun of, or maybe even bullied, for, for saying something throughout the council. So, maybe you could be a little bit more in tune of what they're trying to say and hear them. That's all I have to say.
Who's next?
Donna Rogers.
Donna Rogers, 806 10th Street. I would still like to go back to have these ordinances, 2017 02 and 2014 07 repealed. I'd like to see all the fines dropped for the whole community that you put up. The fine, the attorney fees that we're paying is on the city council, it isn't on the people that are trying to defend their property. You brought these things against them, and they have a right to defend them. And I think the mayor should stop insulting those people. They're not trying to break this city. The city is breaking this city. These two ordinances are outrageous, and you've already read in the paper about the ACLU what they've had to say, that you are violating constitutional and civil rights. Those aren't people to play with. This could get a whole lot worse if you think the attorney fees are bad now. And I'm wondering if having to borrow money out of our sewer fund isn't going to be bad for getting grants and loans when they see the way this is being handled? I think that there's got to be a better way to enforce some codes or change these, where they're more community friendly and more trying to help the community and the people that are having problems with these, than trying to take their property and fining them so much that there is no way for them to do anything with their property. So, what's the point? And then the city, apparently, that's what these were for originally, I think, was strictly to make money for the city. But taking people's property for minor things like that when they can't pay these fines, that is reprehensible. And that's about all I have to say.
Very good.
Judy Costello.
Judy Costello, 709 A Street, Vader. First off, thank you, Andy, for your service. Thank you. I feel like I need to do sign language tonight. My comment tonight is Vader doesn't have the volume, the staff, or the knowledge to maintain a building permit department. I believe we should return it to the county and let them handle all of our permitting stuff. I am just one example. My plumbing permit this year was $158, and the inspector charged the city $250. That means the city got to pick up the cost of $92, give or take a nickel, just on me. And if you do that times five, you've got $500 you just spent unnecessarily. So, my thought tonight is, is I'd sure like to talk about turning the building department back over to the county. Thank you.
Very good. All right, then, thank you, and for those who provided public comment. Let's proceed now with our official agenda items. Item number one, we'll conduct a public hearing to receive input regarding our final draft of the 2018 budget. So, I would declare this public hearing to order at, we'd unofficially adjourn the council meeting, and we will initiate this public hearing at 6:29 PM. Would the council care to place a time limit on this public hearing?
Should we find out if anybody's going to talk to us about it?
Good. Do we have individuals who'd like to make the comments or provide a commentary about this? So, let's see, one.
Then I guess we better put a time limit on it. Then I guess we better put a time limit on it.
A suggestion for?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Or less?
Or less.
Okay, all right, then we will embrace that, beginning at six thirty, we'll for ten minutes or, or less. Mr. Wilson?
I didn't hear what Jill said.
Ten minutes or less will be the timeframe for this public hearing.
Well, what I would like to say on the public hearing, I think it's a little early, I think you should give it one more council meeting for the council members that are gonna be here to take and review it a little bit more. Joe came in, or was Jill reviewing it? And that's just my opinion, I think, I think you should give it a little bit more time.
Don't we have to approve the budget before the next council meeting?
Unless you call a second, another council meeting. Just a suggestion.
So, since I'm, since I'm new to this, what's the difference between the workshop and a public hearing?
Public hearing is where you receive input from the public.
But we did that during the workshop, right?
This is, this is required.
Required.
Okay, all right, I understand that.
Jane?
I just would like to know, um, my comments about the sewer, um, contract. Is this the time that I reiterate that I want to make sure that it's in the budget?
The interfund loan?
The interfund loan?
Sure.
Okay, that was, and, and I don't need nine minutes to do that. But that was one of my main comments, and I don't think you-
Oh, good, it's on my sheet there.
But it's on, I, I understand that, but I wanted to just make sure it's public comment, so that was my, my one comment I was concerned about, so.
I have it online as well.
You won't get it every day.
Andy?
For myself, I would make a motion that you put the public hearing for the final draft of the two thousand eighteen budget on the next council meeting.
But this is a public hearing that's required by state law, before the budget is approved. And it's on the, the next item on our council agenda is the budget consideration. So I don't think that'll work, Mr. Wilson. So, other thoughts or comment from the public?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, you've heard a motion from Mr. Parsons, yeah, Mr. Parsons to conclude this public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded, by Mr. Daly. Any other thoughts? Or opportunity to add additional commentary? Hearing none, let's put it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you. I appreciate the council's efforts. This budget has been examined and evaluated for almost two months, so I appreciate the efforts that have gone into it. All right, let's proceed with agenda item number two, council to consider ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero seven, the final two thousand eighteen budget for the city of Vader. After the workshop that took place for an hour before the city council meeting, the council members are ready to plug in some final figures, some of the line items that were of greatest concern. So without any further commentary, time over to the council.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance two thousand seventeen oh seven, adopting the annual budget for the calendar year of two thousand eighteen, setting forth the estimate revenues and appropriations, establishing job classifications and tenure arrangements, establishing property tax levies for two thousand eighteen, and establishing an effective date with the following changes. Adding two thousand dollars for, in the planning fund, two thousand dollars in the street fund, six thousand dollars for our attorney fees, and one thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents into the part fund.
We have a-
And the inter- Oh, and to show the interfund loan, and the transfer of funds.
So-
I think I got it all.
We've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Daly to approve ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero seven, the two thousand eighteen annual budget, with, as read, with the changes that were noted. And did you capture those changes?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Then, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Shai. All right, do we have any additional council comments or observations about this budget?
Besides Andy's?
Andy's, besides.
You want it, you want it for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, without exception. However, so, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. This is a balanced budget, and it shows that the city of Vader is financially stable, and will continue to reflect that financial stability throughout two thousand eighteen. So thank you. With that, now we'll proceed with agenda item number three, council to consider resolution nineteen dash twenty seventeen, the banking tax capacity. This is clearly standard expectation. Hopefully you have a chance to read it.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution nineteen dash two zero one seven, to bank tax levy capacity pursuant to R C W eighty-four dot five-five dot zero-nine-two substantially as written.
Okay, with the motion submitted by Mr. Shai to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty seventeen as read. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any additional commentary, thoughts, observations by the council members? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is also carried. Now, item number four, council to discuss resolution twenty dash twenty seventeen, the solid waste contract.
I would make the motion, we can approve resolution number twenty, twenty seven from the solid waste, and recycling, so, if you're interested in the behavior, we will do recycling on it.
Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to the council to approve resolution twenty dash twenty seventeen, the solid waste contract, as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons.
I think he wants to read this over. He said he was gonna, there's gonna be some additions, like twenty cents to a, to a customer, or-
That isn't decided in the contract, that would be done separately as a separate ordinance.
This is just-
This is just his contract, yeah.
Nope.
Yeah, he did mention that, but that would not be part of this contract, so that can be discussed in the next council meeting.
Okay. Any other observations?
How does, how does the, how does the mayor and the clerk feel about the five-year period, given that we do have options to cancel it, there's new verbiage in here?
Yeah.
That is longer than we've done in the past.
Well, I'm not comfortable with it, to be honest. We discussed this with him yesterday, and I think that there's wiggle room there. He's had three-year contracts. Five, I think is unusual, but, so we discussed four, and I think that that's more reasonable to me. But I think that's something that could be modified, as we discuss this with him. Yes?
Now, he mentioned retiring or handing it down to his son. Is there ever a contract in there that states that we aren't happy with whoever takes over the business, that we don't have to follow through with the contract regardless?
Yes, if you look, if you look, there's verbiage in there. I brought that up to the attorney when we asked her to draft, as I told her the different things that he suggested. She did not recommend allowing him to transfer this contract to anybody that he sells to. So we did not include that language. He approved the contract without that language, so Mr. Cummins is okay with that. If you look on page, let's see what page of it. Um, sorry. Uh, that's a collection page, where is it? There is that. Oh, page seven, assigning or subcontracting. I know the highlighting is not very dark here, but where it's a little bit darker is the additional language that she added to clarify already the contract in the, in the past, and is moving forward into this new contract that the city has to approve, the contract with the new person. So basically, if he were to sell his company, his business, then the city can choose whether they want to continue on with the contract with the new person or not. And if they choose to do it, then the city has, will make a specific approval of it. It also allows the city, in the event that, that the city does allow whoever the new buyer or owner is, and they don't like how they're doing it or whatever, the verbiage here allows the city to give them sixty days' notice that, to cancel the contract. So that's a good place for us. And Mr. Cummins came in and discussed the changes in the contract with, with me today, and he was okay with every, every change.
I'd like to make some history on this. As long as I've been here, I've known all of the garbage pickup people since I've been here. And we fought with LeMay for a long time. LeMay was gonna come in here, and then, that next year, LeMay raised all of the rates, period.
Yeah.
And I, I was so upset about it, that we stayed with, I think it might have been still Jeff, but Clebinger was the start of this way back, way back when. And it's been almost the same, as far as I'm concerned, and watching the garbage, it's been real good service. In fact, he went around and picked up a lot of garbage for nothing, for people around here, so that's why I went-
Well, on your last city council meeting, Andy, we agree. One hundred percent. I like Jeff, I really do. And that's one of the things that when I moved to Vader, and I found out about the garbage man, I was, I, I just, it just brought back my childhood, and I, I mean-
You're running around the garbage truck?
Well, we always had the same garbage guy growing up, and you could go out and talk to him, or if you had an issue, you'd just talk to the guy on the truck. And then when I went to, um, this, other cities, it drives by, and if you say hey, they ignore you and just keep flying, and so I love it.
Thank you for those thoughts and observations.
I like that kind of girl.
And we're the only community in Lewis County that has a private garbage service. I appreciate your comments, because I support that. Lewis County, I think, you know, big money in the garbage. Maybe Eric could be correct in this observation, but I understand that when the Shealess Centrally Garbage Service was sold, it was sold for three hundred million dollars, something like that, and-
It's the biggest industry in the, in the world, garbage.
Yeah, I believe it is, and Waste Management is a multi-billion dollar international organization. And here we sit in favor of Vader with the private garbage, so it is unusual, let me tell you. But with that, we have a very patient constituent here, future council.
Page three, and it is, I'm kind of concerned, enforcement of non-payment objects on that. And the part that bothers me is at city's discretion of who, how does, how does that play out there? I didn't know if I was reading that upside down or not, but where I'm on page three, of enforcement of non-payment. Why am I not seeing that on page three? I see a bunch of numbers on page three.
You heard them.
And then utility taxes.
I see it.
Do you have it? Where, which page three? Page three of the contract or of the ordinance?
I think it's the contract.
Or the resolution, or the three things, so it must be. Well, hmm.
Solid waste contract, page three. Item four, number four.
Three. How does the- That's page one, page two, page three. Okay, it is page three, item number five, once the city has received notice. You see that?
Yes.
Yes. And so then what part of it are you?
Um, the part that concerns me is, um, cities have such code, or it's supposed to include violation, so, oh, wait a second. There was verbiage that said, hold on, I just have to correct the code. Okay, my apology.
We can't discuss this until the end.
It was, it was a correction of the accounts, and-
Perhaps there's a default section on each floor.
Is that it?
Section eleven is on the bottom.
No, that's my, my, my. So my apology.
All right, then what about the, the new, the fact that we're gonna change it, that enforcement is discretionary now? Previously, garbage service was mandatory?
Is this what I'm talking about?
Yeah. Is that accurate?
It's not been, it wasn't part of my discussion.
No, if you look in, the reason that the attorney suggested to change that from Shaw, which is requirement, to May, which is optional, is because the city has not been enforcing it. And so instead of giving ourselves another contract that states we have to do it, when that's not what the city is doing, is like setting ourselves up for failure kind of thing. So she said, why don't we put May in there, that would make more sense, that way the city has the option, so that you're not violating your own contract.
Yeah. I can tell that Mr. Cummins is extremely frustrated with some of our residents, because there are those who arbitrarily decide they're not going to pay their garbage bills. And so they don't put out their garbage, and he notices who's just letting their garbage pile up. And he informed us of residents or two that, from his perspective, are turning into literal garbage dumps. So once again, I get into a conversation about the code enforcement ordinance that we've got. And so he would love it if there was a way that the city could impose some sort of ordinance violation for the accumulation of garbage on people's property, so they might be motivated to pay their garbage bill.
We have that already.
Well, yeah, but, you know, we see from the application- Well, yeah, but you know, we see from the application that the challenge is there. So anyway, it's all part of a, it's a pattern that is probably not unique to Vader, but is frustrating to our garbage man. So there, we've pulled it up. No, here, here, another comment.
Okay, question. What about the ones that don't need the garbage service? Like, we pay for it, but we never use it because we take our garbage to the shop.
Yeah, that's been a topic of regular discussion when the contract comes up. And it's a matter of economy of scale.
I think that's where, I think that's where the may comes in.
Well, I think, yeah. I think the ordinance itself, the solid waste ordinance states what the city will and will not do as far as enforcing their ordinance. This contract, what it's stating here is just reflecting what's happening. This, if, this says shall or may, I don't think it's as binding as what our ordinance states. And just like all of our code enforcement ordinances, the city has the option of enforcing them or not enforcing them. We just don't want it in our contract that requires us to enforce it if the council decides that they want to do something different. And so I think what it, I don't, my understanding of it is that it, it's not as critical what it says in our contract with the garbage collector because this is really talking more about what our contract is with the garbage collector themselves, not so much the residents, although it does have that section in there. Um, I think, I think that topic that Mr. Rayfield brought up has been brought up a lot because there are some people who, who are responsible and will take their own garbage, but there are some who will just let it pile up even when it's required. And so that, I think that's more of an ordinance question that needs to be addressed. The ordinance more than the contract. So if the council wants to address that, it would be addressed probably through the ordinance, I would think.
Not right now.
Rather than the contract. The contract's just trying to reflect what's actually happening.
Take him to that third.
You probably have to like work it out with him. Because the city contract is the city, I don't know if even that's even possible.
Mr. Wilson, what comment?
If we didn't have a garbage ordinance, we would have cans and cans every week. That period, if people would say, well, you just don't have to have an ordinance because you don't have anything. And they're really would be piling up. And I can tell you, there's a dozen places where the people don't even put their garbage cans out during the week on Wednesdays when they're supposed to. This is what tees me off so bad. And I, I say that, yes, if you don't want to put a garbage can out, fine, you'd be fined to better run down the line by the city for garbage disposal on your property.
Is it in the ordinance that, that they have to pay even if they do not have it picked up?
Garbage service is required in the city of Vader.
I can understand that if it was like we may, some big outfit like that. But this individual little guy, he charges them for nothing?
He has to. He's required by the city ordinance to do it. And the city. That's kind of beyond the scope of this, of this contract, but that, yeah, that's something.
Okay, to get back to approving this contract, you could.
That's part of the suggestion. The motion is still on the table. Right. So any additional council comments? Hearing none, then let's put the matter to a vote. All on paper, say aye. Are there any opposed? Most is carried. Thank you very much. And I will keep you advised with regard to.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with five years. We're gonna hold them to the same standard we've always held them to, so.
Okay. Now, let's proceed here. Council to discuss Resolution 21-2710, the fee schedule update. This is the appeal fee that I believe has been a topic of considerable discussion. And so, and hope you had a chance to.
You know, I brought up, when we were talking about it, very, very high. And I just see that we've gone down to, I think, a more reasonable, I think, for, for the big fee. So my, I think people should be very, very happy that we are trying to just at least cover our costs instead of.
But that doesn't. But that does not cover our costs.
Doesn't even come close. Our, our one appeal that we've had so far costs $1,100 just for the hearing examiner himself, not, not including the attorney fees and stuff. So, so it doesn't cover our costs, but it's something.
It reflects the sensitivity and there are individuals who claim that the council is, goes into a black hole, as I think was mentioned previously. But this might be evidence that that isn't necessarily the case. So I commend the council for their thoughtful responsibility. Other council thoughts?
That's the only change. That's the only change in this ordinance is about one height of resolve.
So any action from the council?
Um, can we take a question or?
Counsel carried, quiet this up, okay.
I think this is a step in the right direction. I think I would like to approve the Resolution 21-2017, update the Vader fee schedule, which reduced appeal fee from 500 to 250, as written.
Okay. Mr. Daly submitted a motion for the council to approve the Resolution 21-2017, as read. Do we have a second? Okay, executive by the center. Additional thoughts? Is your chance to have an extra word or two on it? Do you have a comment from the public now?
May I comment and say that as a future council person, I disagree with this completely and, and wish that we could wait until January, but I understand what you're doing. So I just disagree with the dollar amount. So you're thinking it should stay by something? No, I think it should go down even more. Even more than the 250s? And I think there should be other things. I don't know this. Yes, yes, I just wanted, I just wanted to publicly make that comment to you.
I'll answer that. I think that we should make it the loser pays the entire fee. That's what I think. That's how, that's how I feel. That's why I keep kind of looking down. You want to, you want to appeal? That's great, appeal. We'll pay it if we lose. If, if we win, you pay the $1,100.
And what is wrong with that?
I don't know. That's kind of, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm a little worked up over the idea. But I keep thinking, all right, well, it's only $250 less out of the city coffers. Okay, you know, we already paid 1,100, what's another 250 bucks? But, but.
I just don't think we've discussed it enough. With all the great ideas, there's just kind of.
I don't know. I think, I'd like to revisit it later. We can do this now, it's.
No, let's not do this now.
Oh, this now, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, this, I think. Yeah, I think we do this now, we do this now. People really want it and I understand. And, but I'm thinking, we can't keep, you know, we can't keep paying $1,100 every time someone wants to say, no, I want my grass to be, to be eight feet high, you know?
I think what's frustrating about it is, I think it should stay 500, if not go up to make sure that we cost it, it makes the, it pays for itself. If people would come and talk to us, it, just like Ken and his wife, instead of getting all upset and worked up, if you just talk to us, we have worked on every one of them that have come to talk to us. And we've given extension times. We've, we've done everything that we can. And so I disagree with this resolution. I want to keep it the way that it is.
Well, I think, I think it should be easier for folks to appeal. That way it keeps the city in check, right? I mean, if, if, if the city got out of control and started doing something, you know, obviously we would stop if, if we kept, if we had to pay the entire amount every single time, we would stop being wrong. I don't know if I'm realizing that correctly, but anyway.
I like Joe's idea. I think that's a good plan.
And then there's, there's, there's more skin in the game for folks that want to, want to challenge, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Anyway.
Obviously, the action that is about to take place here doesn't preclude future consideration of the entire audience, I think, who we've just heard. So the opportunity is not precluded. With it, so.
Do we have motions?
Yes, motions still in play. Any other comments? Then, hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
There was one opposed, duly noted, but the majority carries and the agenda or item is approved. So now, we'll, an update on the limb disposal slash excavator repair topic. There has been a discussion that has taken place and it's been associated with an ongoing legal action. And so it's been easier said than done. But we're still in a position to converse with Mr. Rayfield on that topic. After the council meeting, we could.
There we go.
Put our heads together.
All right.
But we're taking everything under careful legal advisement, given the fact that this is under litigation, a case that's on the 29th. So. I know, but it's a similar ongoing activity. So that's where we're standing on that particular topic. Any council commentary? Then let's proceed with item number seven, update on the overweight vehicle regulations. Another sticky topic.
So I took council's suggestion to, at the last council meeting, council asked me to take to the attorney the idea of, excuse me, having the ordinance be triggered when there was excessive number of loads over a certain period of days, that type of situation in place. And have the, have the ordinance be triggered by that so that, so that single loads or, you know, occasional work doesn't trigger the ordinance. I took that to the attorney and she is still looking into it, but she, initial, her initial comment on it was that she didn't think that that would be feasible. She said it is a state requirement that we sign, have signs up stating about the weight limits. If we have a weight limit and permits required, that they require that we have the signage. And she says, I don't know how you would sign that. How would you explain in a sign so that the, the truck drivers know what those requirements are? And she just felt that that might not, that, that didn't seem like, like really a feasible way. She is counter suggesting that we raise the weight limit instead so that it, it will catch things like logging trucks and, and bigger heavy loads like that if that's what council is more concerned with. But again, she's continuing to check into that and do so, do a little bit of research and see if she can find out more information about it. That was her opinion when I brought it to her. So you can do with it what you like.
I, I have to, had an interesting conversation yesterday with John Wallace, who's the co-owner of Wallace Rock. Because we had three deliveries made in the last couple of days. And he's acquainted with city's efforts to control them. We're not unique in this situation. And when I told him that we were looking at the weight and numbers and he actually chuckled and said, you know, cities really, they must not understand the weight things because it all depends on the, the number of axles.
The distribution.
Exactly. And you could take, he was explaining it better than I can, but I suggested he come to one of our council meetings and explain it because it really doesn't matter the total weight of something, it's how it is distributed. So here, I'll throw that into the conversational equation.
Well, I know our engineers have, have calculations and different things that they, like when we have worked through these permits and talking about the different number of axles and the weight distribution, maybe that's somebody who we could reach out to if council wants to get more information about that.
Yeah. And it varies significantly from county to county, state to state. One state nearby allows 140,000 pounds in their cities that seem to bother them. Others are, only allow 60,000. So, but we're on the low end, is what he thought. But, so anyway, I want to further confuse.
I think raising the, the limit would, I mean, as the counter suggestion suggests, that, because we've, we've, we've tried to run through so many different scenarios of how we would make these signs and how would we change these to incoming or outgoing or this street or that street. And I, I don't even see why we even need one, but apparently we need to have something in the books to protect ourselves.
Do we?
You don't have to. You don't have to.
Do we all, Winlock, they told me they don't have anything.
Yeah, it's not required, it's, it's optional. It's just if you want.
So really, the only reason that we've even been talking about this is because of that, the logging experiences that we've had, right?
There's been one on the books for many, many years, but it, it was insufficient when it came time to actually implement it. And so that's when it was updated. And once it was updated, I think it came to the forefront and everybody was like, wait a minute, you know? So, so there, there's been one on the books for a very long time. But do we have to have one? Absolutely not. It's not required. It's optional.
But if we do have one, it has to be written a certain way?
Yeah. I mean, it has to be.
So we get to choose whether or not we have them, but we don't get to choose how we want it?
Well, there's certain, there, you can, but it has to be.
Defensible and.
It has to be defensible in court. If we're gonna have it, it's got to be written properly is.
So it has to be 14 pages?
Pretty much.
Not understandable?
It's got to have a lot of showers and a lot of mays.
If you, if you want it to be defensible. Otherwise, you end up losing your court case this way. You don't want that, so. If you're gonna do it, do it good.
Did have a comment from the public.
Ken, you, the city did this when they have all the logging going on. And didn't you make just an agreement with the logging company that any damage they incurred, they would pay for on the roads?
Yeah, they agreed to have it inspected before and inspected afterwards.
And so what is wrong with that? I mean, the city did it, didn't we do it twice with the ones down at the end of 10th Street?
But the only reason that it was done was because there was a weight limit requirement. If there was no weight limit requirement, the logging company would have no reason to do that kind of a contract with us.
But if you're gonna save your roads, if you're gonna have a large haul that's going in and out, in and out, day after day after day, that is going to do damage to roads. And you need to have some kind of agreement with that particular event that they're gonna pay for the damage.
The agreement was created as a result of the ordinance, because the ordinance is in place. And maybe I'm misunderstanding, so correct me if I'm wrong here, but the agreement was required.
In this anyway, Ken was involved with this.
Jill was here with the latest.
Well, the city did it, but it was with a, just an agreement with the trucking company. company for the damage they incurred on the road for all of those loads.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and it worked, I didn't see anybody complain.
But it worked because we had the ordinance in place.
Well, whatever, what's wrong with it? It worked. Is there a problem going forward with this?
What's wrong with it is that, right now, it's, the weight limit is, what's wrong with it? Because right now, it's, as it is right now, if you get a load of gravel or something like that, right? So we're trying to alleviate that.
If you just said that we don't need a weight limit, fine.
But then- I said we don't need a weight limit, ordinance.
We do need a weight limit.
Okay, but now-
It's not required. But if we don't have a weight limit ordinance, then when those logging activities happen, we won't get a contract with them. They won't come in out of the kindness of their heart and do a contract with us, because we have no legal authority to require them to do that.
So how heavy is a fully loaded log truck?
We don't know.
Size of the log, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of what-
So, we know that a fully loaded gravel truck is 35?
No, 60.
It's somewhere in, if my memory serves, and we can look up the, the most recent one that we did like two years ago with the logging company, it was somewhere around 100,000 pounds for the log trucks.
Yeah, I was thinking 120.
Maybe, maybe even that much, but it would, I remember in the hundreds.
Really?
Yeah, fully loaded, yeah.
So, so, so we can add an ordinance in the, in the books that works for people to get gravel and goes up to that, why don't we just say, we think, over 100,000 pounds, you need to contact City Hall or get a-
Yeah, I think we've said that several times before in the course of this conversation. If you put it high enough, and then set a certain limit, five or six-
Either that or it's not having at all, but it sounds like we kind of need to have one that would cap, you know, the high end, so that, just in case something like that happens, but-
How much more logging areas do we have? For another 10 years, the trees grow back.
The McMurray, McMurphys have a considerable amount of timber, and so they, they could harvest that if they want. We do have-
I do have a question about that, is, now, if you get some, like, bigger outfits that know legalities and stuff, they're gonna know you don't actually have a way of weighing them? They're gonna go around you. I'm just saying, there's, there's gotta be something, something there.
We don't weigh them out here, that isn't how it's, how it's determined.
Yeah, I'm just saying that like, if they know that they're overweight, they, they're not gonna carry it.
Pretty much all we'd be able to go on is what it says on the truck side, it says, yep, gross vehicle weight.
Yeah, if, if-
But in the lumber thing, they took it to the mill.
Right, then they get weighed at the mill, and then you have a record of what their truck loads were.
But those loads are weighed at-
So if we see, if we see a logging truck going through town that's loaded, and we know that there aren't any permits, then we get that information, we get the truck information, we can track it down that way and go and track, and that's how we would, I mean, not because we weighed it, but if we know there's a fully loaded truck, we know that's gonna meet the, the weight limit.
All right. Just saying, you know, gotta watch your-
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
Does that weight limit apply on 506?
No.
Okay.
You just said that, we don't need to come through. No, the state highway has a, is built to handle those kinds of loads, so that's not an issue on that.
Okay, time is slipping by. One more comment?
All the times I've been to Goods and Wallace, they weigh all our loads.
On the way out?
Yeah, on the way out, on their scales. So they're gonna be, we gotta figure from them for all those loads, they're gonna know within a few pounds what it's gonna be.
For sure they are, yeah, there's always the rules to who, you know, they, they want to sign steps and stuff, they should track it. But, okay, where are we going with this?
It was just an update.
Just an update.
So if council wants to continue to have us work on setting a weight limit, then I'll tell, I can tell the attorney to go ahead and, and we can figure out, you know, kind of where, where logging trucks hit.
That's my suggestion. Because we're trying to keep it accessible for the community to use, dump trucks, things in, do upgrades, improvements and things like that, so, but not, you know, tear up the streets, so that's my suggestion.
Okay, then if the council concurs, we will proceed ahead with that suggestion. Number eight, update on storm grain projects.
We needed to update on, oh, as of the last council meeting, we had had the TV, the crew come out and do some TVing work, and then they were gonna come back the next week and do some more TVing with a different equipment. Turns out, they, they didn't have the right equipment to do 90-degree turns, and so that second round of TVing from the creek heading up the hill hasn't happened. They don't have the right equipment. We also found out that the funding that we were approved for, they didn't have it all. So we said, okay, well, that's good, because we-
That's $5,000.
We have $5,000. They, anyways, it was something very strange. Anyway, so we said, well, okay, the funding's not there, they don't have the equipment, so we can wait and apply for that grant money again next year if we want to, to continue on. The pressure washer is here, we have all the equipment.
That was paid for?
That was all paid for, right? Yeah, almost all of it, almost all of it. A little bit of it might roll over into next year's $5,000 that they offered to us, but, yeah, it'll be covered, it just, some of it might be, about a thousand of it might be covered next year instead of this year, so.
Very good. Well, if there are no further comments, then that was our last agenda item, so it would be my honor to conclude the city council meeting officially at 7:17. And thank you all for your service in 2017.